You are watching Access LaPorte County Channel 97. Coming up next is the August 19th meeting for the Michigan City Common Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access laporte county dot org.
Good evening and welcome to the Michigan City Common Council meeting. Today is Tuesday, August 19th, 2025. I would ask if you will please silence all of your electronic devices. Join us in the pledge of allegiance and among a prayer. Madam Clerk, on roll call, please.
Mr. Beatry.
Present.
Mr. Coulter.
Present.
Mr. Dabney.
Present.
Dr. Cora.
Present.
Ms. Lee.
Present.
Ms. Moldnar.
Present.
Mr. Nelson.
Present.
Mr. Przewalinski.
Present.
And Ms. Tillman.
Present.
We have nine present and no one absent.
If the council does not mind, I would just like to take one moment. We have a special, special guest in our office, in our chambers today. We have students. If you would please just come up to the podium and state where you're from and your school and what class has brought you here today.
Hi, we're from South Central. My name is Miley Mosher.
Hi, my name's McKenna Welsh.
I'm Autumn McKinney.
My name's Brooklyn Jones.
I'm Ellen Yellen.
I'm Emma Elliott.
Well, welcome, South Central. On behalf of the city council, we welcome you. And this is our, this is our council meeting. And we are glad to have you here today and for your observation. And if we can assist you moving forward, please feel free to reach out and we'll be here to assist. Thank you.
You guys wouldn't happen to have any extra school buses, would you?
You can have one.
Next on our agenda, we have, next on our agenda, we have approve of the minutes for our regular council hybrid Zoom, July 15th, 2025, executive session, July 23rd, 2025. Regular council hybrid Zoom, August 4th, 2025. May I entertain a motion for approval?
Motion to approve second.
I heard a motion to my right was that Mr. Dr. Cora and I had a second from Councilman Nelson? Or I didn't hear. I had the motion here and a second by Councilman Nelson, please. Thank you. Madam Clerk, on the vote, please.
Ms. Lee. I. Ms. Moldnar. Ms. Moldnar?
Yeah, um, we voted for all these together.
Yeah.
And I felt on some of them, I can't vote. So how do we deal with that?
Sustain.
Then I abstain.
Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Mr. Przewalinski?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Beatry?
Aye.
Mr. Coulter?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
And Dr. Cora?
Abstained because I was asked. Thank you.
Okay, we have seven in favor and two abstained.
And the approve of the minutes have passed. Reports of standing committees. The Finance Committee, the Michigan City Finance Committee met on this evening at 6:00 PM. The Michigan City Riverboat and Boyd Claims Docket for August 19th, 2025. Riverboat Fund 2235, $314,928.25. Riverboat EFT Fund 2235, $0. Rainy Day Fund 2236, $0. Boyd Development Fund 2504, $0. This is for Reith and Riley Construction Co., Inc. And this is also in regards to the construction of the street repairs. The Finance Committee did receive invoice breakdowns by the divisions that this covered for, which was the Michigan City 2025 dash one CCMG. The total claims is for $314,928.25. May I entertain a motion for approval?
So move support.
Have a motion by Councilman Dabney and a second by Mr. Beatry. Madam Clerk, on the vote, please.
Ms. Moldnar?
Aye.
Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Mr. Przewalinski?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Beatry?
Aye.
Mr. Coulter?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Dr. Cora?
Aye.
And Ms. Lee?
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Claims have been approved. Also, during the city finance meeting, the City of Michigan City 2025 Riverboat Rainy Day Fund, Statement of Cash Position, Fund Type 2235, Riverboat Fund, Ending Balance, Fund Type 2236, Rainy Day Fund, Ending Balance, $1,167,490.42. The grand total fiscal year today, August 19th, 2025, Ending Balance, We also have the opportunity of discussing the cash balances that was provided to the Finance Committee meeting. And this will also be addressed and brought up under department heads by the city controller. That is all that we have for the city finance at this time. Moving on to reports from boards and commissions. Are there any reports from boards and commissions? Councilwoman Moldnar?
Thank you, Madam President. First of all, I want to congratulate and acknowledge Sustainability Commissioner Lawrence Zimmer, who pulled together a wonderful workshop with the Board of Works Department here. And they had a workshop that was entitled Building a Sustainable Michigan City. And this was workshop number one. I really want to thank all the people, the residents of Michigan City, who came out to attend this on a very beautiful sunny and warm evening. This is available to watch on Alco's Network. That's Access LaPorte County on their YouTube page. So I encourage everybody to take a look at that. They brought in three extremely high-quality experts. They're talking about this different aspects of building sustainably. And I think everybody would enjoy it. It was a very good program. They said number one because they hopefully will be offering these every quarter of the year. And so I look forward to many more opportunities like this to actually encourage building green in Michigan City, which in turn saves money and utilities and ultimately reduces our carbon footprint. So we hopefully will be on track to actually reduce that by 50% in the year 2030, which is the goal that the Sustainability Commission acknowledged. I also have an announcement for the Northwest Indiana Green Drinks, which is happening Thursday, September 4th at 6:30 PM. This is actually a follow-up to the very brief 10, 15-minute program that Sacha G. Burns did in our chamber console. So this is going to be the expanded version of Recycle Smart, Do Your Part. So I hope you'll join us again Thursday, September 4th, 6:30 PM. You can pick that up on Save the Dunes Facebook Live or you can get a Zoom link from Em, that's E.M., which stands for Emily, em@savetunes.org. And she'll be very happy to send you the Zoom link so you can join that way. Also, I'm very happy to acknowledge, after a couple invitations, I am happy to announce that two of our Sustainability Commissioners, that would be Beverly McMartin and myself, we will be taking the 10-hour bus trip to Albany, Ohio. Five hours there, five hours back. So we can actually visit some of the data centers that are there. We'll be seeing ones that are operational. We'll be seeing ones that are under construction. And we'll also be seeing, we'll also be meeting with some of the manager of those facilities. So I'm very excited about this. I'm really looking forward to it because this will give two representatives from our community an opportunity to go and see those facilities and come back firsthand what they look like. I know other council persons here have gone and seen the facilities locally. So, and that's going to be with the Northwest Indiana Forum. They're the ones that are organizing that and making it possible for us to do this.
Councilman Przewalinski?
I don't know anything.
Are there any other reports from boards and commissions? There are none, moving down to our reports of special or select committees. Are there any reports of special or select committees? Any reports of special select committees? There are none. Reports from mayor or other city officers and departments?
Hi, good evening, council. As you can see that I passed out just a handful of cash balances that we have. These are cash balances that have employees working like these different, are paid out of these, these different funds. As you all know, we just finished our audit. So as soon as the audit results and findings are published, I will be back up here to go over the full financials and some of, and the findings. But we can't do that until the audit results are officially published. If you look at our cash balances, what's really important, I think, is to look behind and see the budget, the expense budget performance report because they go hand in hand. A cash balance will only tell you so much. A budget performance report, and these are on the expenses, will show that everybody, the same funds that I'm talking about that, that include employees, are all 50% or below on their budget. So everybody is, is on track on their budget. So we're watching it. The cash balances, though, if you look, I know general fund is very healthy. The other ones, some of them are slightly lower than they were in 2024. And one of the reasons for that is that, we, we talked about this before, riverboat. Riverboat funds are trending right now about $349,000 less than last year. Every year, the council approves riverboat transfers that help with all these, with most of these funds' operating costs. I have not made all the riverboat transfers yet. And, and last year, I would have done a lot of them in June, just, just as a budgetary transfer. Because I've got to watch the riverboat, see where we're at with riverboat before we make those transfers. And what we've realized is that we really don't want to transfer any additional riverboat. Just because we budgeted a riverboat transfer does not mean that we will need to make it. So that's kind of just a real quick synopsis. But once again, I will be back up as soon as the audit results. Whenever the next council meeting is up, I'll be up to talk about the full financial report.
Councilman Dabney?
Yeah, it's just a quick question, just so the, the public can hear. And obviously, we're waiting to get more information in to start our budget for next year. And that also leads into labor negotiations with police and fire, which we cannot start until we get all of our numbers because we can't meet now to promise things that we may not have funds for down the line.
Absolutely, absolutely. That's why a lot of these, I do June because June is, is the starting point. We look at half year and then we start project forward. And we're still looking at data from our municipal advisors and, and what might be happening in the future. So yep, you're correct.
Councilman Przewalinski?
Yeah, Mary Lynn, I appreciate the, the report. I know we talked about this possibly, I don't know, a month and a half ago about, yeah, about producing this every quarter so that that way the council knows exactly where we're going. And we don't wait till the end of the year, the fiscal year. And all of a sudden, you know, we don't have any money in, which has happened in the past. Not that we didn't have any money, but it was a lot lower than what the council expected it to be. And then we had to deal with it from there. So thank you very much. I appreciate it and it helps, it helps out very, very much.
Yeah, I think this is a good gateway for our budget, which is going to be started, we're just starting now. And then we'll be discussing this further with all the budget hearings.
Thank you, Mary Lynn.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Good evening, council.
Good evening, mayor.
Just to add to that, too, like, like she said, you know, typically, you know, we would just automatically do the riverboat transfers annually in June. Last year, we start, we stopped that. We're only doing the transfer if it's needed or necessary. So just because it's budgeted doesn't mean it's going to be transferred. The goal is not to just, you know, sometimes you, you put money in people's pocket, they spend it, right? And I, I don't want the department heads thinking they got money that, to spend just because it's there. Because it's not. So a couple of things, I did put a couple of things up on the podium. I know there's an opioid awareness walk that the city is sponsoring. That's going to kick off our grant cycle for our opioid money. We had several providers here today. So the goal is we're doing a walk from City Hall down to the train station and back on the 28th. It's Drug Overdose Awareness Day. So we would love to see the council people out at that. We also had a very good showing at our Indiana Plan Open House. That's the most people I've ever seen at, at the open house, ever. I did put flyers on your desk. They still have time to register. The, the actual orientations, there's two dates listed. To participate, they have to register and they have to attend one of those orientations. But the training doesn't happen until October. So this gives enough time to, to get enough people in the class. And you all, thank you again for passing and creating, establishing the fund for that. You know, each participant will get a $200 stipend at the end of the two weeks, but also a pair of work boots as well. So the goal is to have them prepared for the workforce when they start their, hopefully, career working somewhere in Michigan City. So I'm going to go ahead and do this, this, last night, we had a will tax and excise tax workshop. So I'm going to go ahead and cover that so that the public can also have the same information that was presented last night. And one of the things I would like to say, I know that recently Governor Braun was interviewed and he, and one of the things he said, he said, mayors need to try to find ways to, to do it, to provide services for less, right? And then he went on to say, as he was interviewed, he said that, you know, what happened with Senate Bill One is it's an empowering effect it has for the taxpayers because now it forces cities to listen to the residents to learn what level of services they want and what they're willing to pay for. Well, we don't charge for a whole lot. So this is going to be interesting as we move into the next couple of years with Senate Bill One and the impact it has. So I'm not, you can go to the next slide. So one of the things I want to really talk about so that people understand is where we are financially. It's good that we're sharing our cash balances because I will tell you, historically as a council, we didn't know that we were approving budgets that was eating up all the cash balances. We had no idea, oh, we got enough money, right? We got enough money. But yeah, we did. We had the money, but we were eating up riverboat funds and through, through that whole process. Next, next one. So I want to talk a little bit about the, the riverboat funding because what I need the public to understand is we're going to be under $8 million in riverboat funds for this year on what we received. At the highest, we received $26 million in riverboat funding in one year. And that was in 2014. And then in, as a historic low was in 2020 and that was COVID, right? So 6 million, 6.8 million dollars. And, you know, long ago, when I was on the council previously, that was one of the things. We can't expect this money to be here forever. Anything could happen and then it did. COVID happened. The other thing is we recognize that a rainy day fund needed to, to be created. But right now, we're averaging about $8 million that we're receiving in riverboat funds each year compared to some of those historic highs previously. So cash balance, the reason why I want to talk about the cash balance, you know, from 2016 to 2019, we ate up about $8.7 million in the cash reserves of the riverboat, right? And then again, you know, we increased the cash reserves over the last five years. But let me say this, we had COVID-19 money in 2020. We received about a million dollars. And then we've been living off of the $16 million in our funds. That money's gone after this, right? So now we have to figure out how to do more with less. We've been relying heavily on those monies and riverboat is not a thing that we should be relying on to operate. But that's what we're doing. Next one. That's an eye chart. So I'm, this is just, again, the cash balances, it just shows from 2016 through now, how much money we received in, that our negative impact that we've had on the riverboat fund. So in 2016, we, we spent $4.4 million of the cash reserves. 2017 was historic, you know, we received 2016, we received $26 million. We didn't overspend. 2018, we spent a couple of million dollars more. 2019, we spent a couple of million dollars of the reserves. So that was a pattern. Then COVID hit. And again, COVID allowed us to receive funding from the federal government to help us. So next slide. So the NVH Fund, the only reason why I have this slide in here is because we're going to be talking about the will and excise tax. And the motor vehicle highway fund is how we fund our street department. That's how we fund it. We get allocations. Those are the Indiana codes that govern us. In 20, go to the next slide. In 2018, there was legislation that changed the way we receive our money. So the money used to be fully unrestricted. And what we found, or what the state legislature found, is that many cities and towns were only spending their money on personnel and not really on streets. So they split the money in half. 50% goes to restricted, 50% goes to unrestricted. Well, what that changed for us is we start supplementing our street department with riverboat funds. You go to the next slide. So it's an eye chart. But every year, we've been supplementing street department. In 2024, to the tune of $1.9 million in our budget for the street department from riverboat funds. And 2025, $1.6 million is where we're at to fund the street department. So again, these are monies that are declining, but we're spending a lot of riverboat funds to fund our street department. And not only that, CCMG, if you go to the next slide, is another thing. We're using riverboat funds to fund our match for our matching dollars for the CCMG program. We're using riverboat redevelopment and our restricted funds to cobble together our match. And when I say cobble together, last year and this year was a historic thing that they allowed us to match $1.5 million. Well, we only budgeted a million dollars in our budgets because there was something new. So we had to get money from a lot of different sources to make that match. Now, I will say going forward, CCMG is only going to be once a year. So, and the maximum is a million dollars. That has already been set in stone by the state. So we, we will no longer have a one, CCMG one, a CCMG two. It's only going to be once a year annually. Next slide. So Senate Enrolled Act One, again, you know, spent a lot of time downstate. This is impacting us by the tune of about a million dollars right now for next year and the following year, but about 3.7 in 2028 is what we're anticipating. So, you know, it's really forcing cities and municipalities to adopt local income taxes, to find other ways of increasing revenues. It's changing, you know, TIF neutralization, our TIF fund, they're impacted by this as well. They're going down. So a lot of, I know we had AIM Indiana here last night to speak to that a little bit. You go to the next slide. But this is the impact. It impacts our bonding capacity. And eventually, as we go through the years, when the public safety lit and all these lits go away and we pass our local income tax, it's not enough to cover what we get today. That's why we're going to have the shortfall of 3.7. Right now, public safety lit covers police and fire salaries, $2 million to each. And 3.7, we're going to be out of in 2028. So we have to figure out how we're going to cobble that together. Well, whoever's going to have to figure that out in 2028. All right, likely outcome for cities, again, we know it, all the mayors are talking about it. So I'm not going to belabor this. So next slide. House Enrolled 1461, this is the road funding bill. So initially, when it started, and I spoke to her earlier in the year and you all did a resolution supporting them not passing it as it was. And what it was trying to do is force us to pass a will tax to even get CCMG. That did not happen. That got pulled away from the bill. So you don't have to pass a will tax to receive CCMG. Totally disconnected from it, has nothing to do with it anymore. But they did put some carrots out there and they did make some changes to road funding as far as smaller cities and things of that nature. So if you go to the next slide, these were the, the biggest changes. So again, we're, you know, we apply every year. We got one, almost 1.5 this year. But the lane mile direct distribution is something new. That is that carrot, that if you pass the, the excise and will tax, that you have access to this additional money, which will not go into effect that money until 2027. So that's when that actually becomes available. And it's only available if you adopt a will tax. For us, it's about 200,000 plus in addition to whatever we get from CC, I mean, from the will tax if we pass it. Next slide. And, and this is why it matters. I'm going to repeat it. You know, we know we're going to, how we're going to be impacted with our property tax, the money that we're going to be receiving. And with public safety list seated and all those things going away, we know what the impact is going to be. And we know that there's a decline in riverboat funds. It's just what it is. It's declined year over year. I didn't even talk about Boyd Gaming. We've only been getting $50,000 for the last couple of years, right? That used to be up to a million dollars or so and we're getting 50 Gs. And we're underway with our negotiations with all of our labor organizations. So street department, again, is heavily funded by riverboat funds. And we've been using all of that. So that's why this has been brought forth and, and is on the agenda. Next slide. Again, this will and, will and excise tax. I was confused when I first received the information. There's a difference. So the will tax, go to the next slide. The difference is that, you know, this money can be used to supplement again. It could be used to do all these different things. But the excise tax is for passenger vehicles, up to $25. And the will tax is for commercial vehicles. I thought they were one in the same that it was $65. That's what it looked like when we received it before last year. But those are two separate things, commercial and passenger. And I had handouts for the public to take as well. And where it shows the minimum amount and the maximum amount that we could get. You go to the next slide. So the will tax is anywhere from $5 to $40. And Purdue LTAP has done a great job. And I printed copies for the public to have. It's on the back of these, these sheets up here, but it shows Michigan City. It's a calculator. And it has a breakdown of all the categories of passenger, commercial, and what it would generate. At the maximum of $40, well, $5 to $40 because there's different categories for like trailers and different things, what it could calculate. And then the passenger vehicles, the minimum is $7.50, up to $25 a year. The $25 a year is about 7 cents a day. And one of the things that I really wanted to highlight, and I can't see it because that's in the way, is the 600, I think it's 638,000. At the maximum, it generates $638,783. Minimum about 183,000. What I will say to that is I've already shared that we're funding them by $1.6 million in riverboat and we're doing the match. And we're doing the match with Riverboat and redevelopment. So we're using all of the funds in these other categories. This would take away some of the strain off of some of those other funds. Um, next slide. So, lane mile distribution, I'm not going to spend a lot of time. That's only if a will tax is passed, that, that unlocks the key for those funds. Um, and it's based on, you know, the number of road, lane miles that you have in the city. Um, and go to the next slide. So, to be eligible, basically, you have to adopt the will tax and the excise tax together. Um, the ordinance that is before you has both, um, in it. And then, um, again, if it's passed before September 1, we will start receiving those funds next year. Uh, and then, the lane mile distribution will be in 2027. Next one. So, about 200,000 dollars for Michigan City. Uh, next one. And, this sheet, I printed some of these because, uh, Mary Lynn and Tamiko are, are deputy, chief deputy, are deputy um, controller, controller, and second, uh, deputy, they were with, uh, in French Lick this week, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday for training. And uh, learning, really, they were talking predominantly only about Senate bill, all these bills, that now we have to abide by. Um, but, they don't have all the answers yet for all the legislation that was passed. So, um, one of the things that we shared with them is that, the majority of their staff with DGLF has less than five years. I mean, they're all brand new, people doing our audits, you know, people dealing with our finances, they're new. Um, so, you know, they don't even know what, what to expect with the bills that have been passed. So, we know that we have the will and excise tax available, but they don't know the lane distribution miles, how they're going to calculate it and all this. That's why they waited till 2027 for us to receive those funds, because they have no idea what's next and how they're going to handle it yet. So that's going to be interesting. Next slide. So, why? You know, why, why is this on the agenda? It's because, I mean, we know, we're losing money. We know we still have to provide services. Um, it unlocks, you know, additional funding, and that's where we're at, you know? And I think, um, it's important that we take a hard look at this, and, you know, I appreciate the support on this. Um, but, it's just a hard fact and a hard reality of where we're at. We know we're going to be down a million dollars already, and Riverboat Funds are going to be down. And I am determined to give raises to the employees this year. Last year, we did not give raises. Uh, we gave um, a bonus, one-time bonus last year. And um, you know, that's kind of where we're at. And uh, that's the goal. And um, I think it's important that, um, we continue to, um, support and, and support our employees, um, for what they're trying to do. And, uh, continue to support them in that way. So, um, any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Mayor, thank you very much for the presentation. You know, this is a complicated thing to understand, but you put it in as simple a format as you can. So thank you very much for doing that. And the second thing I wanted to mention was on August 28th, I would have loved to go on this opioid awareness walk, but I will be in Ohio visiting the data center.
That's alright, that's alright. Um, but you know what, this is just the first of many things that, that the group today, um, we talked about things we can do throughout the year. So, this is just, that's the actual week of the awareness, so we wanted to try to put something together so we can kick off the grant.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Chris Belansky.
Yeah, Mayor, uh, I caught it tonight, and hopefully that's what you were saying. Uh, the extra money that we would be getting if this was passed, could be used for the match for the CCMG million dollars, right?
Well, the restrictive funds are already used for the match. So, yeah, the restricted money is used for the match already.
Okay.
And, the additional money can be used for capital, for whatever, it's a big bucket.
Okay, I understand, but I believe you said that if, you know, if this passes, that this extra money can also be used.
I don't think I said that, but I'll have to look at the legislation, I didn't, I don't think I did, but.
Okay.
If, if it's on here.
That's what I wrote down here.
If it's on here, it says, um, no. What we talked about last night, let me explain that. So there was a caveat. So, that lane mile distribution, direct distribution, um, there's a caveat. So, they don't want us to rely heavily, so CCMG, let's say we get 200,000 dollars, for the lane mile distribution. They subtract that from the total amount of money that you can get from CCMG. That's the, that's what that is. So let's say, a million dollars is CCMG, and we get 200,000, I'm going to do quick math. We're only eligible for 800,000 dollars in CCMG. And that lowers how much we need for a match now. They don't want us to rely on getting that full amount of money if we can get that lane mile distribution. So it takes some of the, uh, they want us to have our own skin in the game, basically. But, um, that's what that's for, it lowers how much CCMG we get, if we have the lane mile distribution. Yes.
Councilman Dabney.
Yeah, and I wanted to, to clarify with Don, because, were you asking that the will tax dollars that we get, can that be used for our batch? Is that what you were?
Yeah, that's the way I understood.
Right.
What was said earlier.
That's what I thought you were, yes, that's what I thought you were asking.
Yeah.
Will tax dollar.
But the will tax, now, now the will tax, yes.
Yes.
You said extra bucket, I thought you meant the second bucket that's unlocked.
No, I didn't, I didn't say anything about buckets.
Okay, okay.
I didn't say bucket one way or the other, I was just saying.
It can.
You, yeah, you said that.
Yes, it can.
Yeah, you can use for the match.
Yes, you can.
For CCMG.
The will tax, yes.
That's what I was saying.
Yes, I'm sorry, when you say.
Okay. Alright, so we got that cleared up.
Yep.
Any other comments or questions from the council? Councilwoman Mauden Hour.
Yeah, I just have some important trivia facts that I think people may find fascinating, is that the will tax for counties was first passed in 1988 in Indiana, and then that was extended to cities in 2016. So we've missed out several rounds of being able to receive extra funding for paving and repairing streets.
And the city of La Porte passed it back then, but I will say, most of the casino cities, it's just what it is. I know Hammond just passed it. Uh, it's on everybody's agenda right now because of the money that's being lost through Senate Enrolled Act One. So I know Madison, I know Evansville, Hammond passed it, everybody is now scrambling to, to figure out how they're going to do, you know, with the budgets. You know, it's budget time, so everybody's trying to get it done. Um, but I think La Porte has had it since 2016, since it was, um, they had the opportunity to do it. We've relied heavily on Riverboat Funds for all of our street funding. We don't get 26 million anymore though. Wish I was mayor then.
Mayor, just as a follow-up, I think even though we had this will tax option for many years, this linkage to receive LMDD funds, that passed just now, is that correct?
That's new.
That's new.
That just happened in this year's legislation session, legislative session.
That is the reason for the urgency to tap.
No, well, no, the urgency is, um, we don't have, we're, we're losing a million dollars.
Because of the property taxes.
Yes.
Okay.
Senate Bill One.
Alright, thank you.
Senate Bill One.
Councilman Dabney.
And this is not a question, this is just a, a comment, and I don't know if I'm speaking for the rest of the council, but the mayor has talked about this, uh, plenty of times, and it is as bleak as it sounds. And the state is really putting a lot of the burden back on the cities. You heard her say, there's a possibility we may have to increase certain taxes and things of that sort to cover for the, the new way that the state is giving money into the cities. Um, so I just wanted to, to put that out there, let the public know that, um, it is as bleak as it sounds. Because I didn't have a question.
Yeah, right now, you know, again, we cut quite a few things out of the budget last year. So a million dollars, I guess the issue is, you know, the million dollars plus trying to give the raise, that's a, a thing. But I will say, the public safety let, we just got that. You know, we just went through that, gave all the raises to the police and fire. Um, you know, did all those, you know, and, and that was a good thing. But now to take it back and not give us enough to cover the revenue that we were getting, I think is the issue. You know, when we went through this back in 2008 with the property tax caps, at least there was a way to recover some of the money. Right now, we don't have an, we're going to, restaurant, food and beverage tax, uh, local income tax, all this stuff is going to be coming to the council. You know, all these things, because we got to be prepared for 2020, 2028, right? And so everything has been put, placed back on the city to figure it out. So, um, those are the things that are coming. Um, but again, even when you, when a local income tax is passed, it's not enough to cover the public safety let and seat it and everything that we get already. So that's where we're at. Any other questions?
There are no other questions.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Are there any other reports from other city officers and departments?
Marty Corley, Chief of Police, Michigan City Police Department. Good evening, Council President and Council members. I'm going to give my, uh, stat report, I didn't come to the first meeting this month, uh, change. And appreciate you all changing your meeting around to be part of National Night Out also too. Um, so, starting off our department stats, total calls of service, uh, for July was 4,028, that's 420 more than in June. Um, start giving out the loud music, loud noise, we have 47 of those total, seven more than June. In the Sheridan Beach area, we only had two, which is one less than in June. Disturbances, 107, um, that's nine more than in June. The disturbance for Sheridan Beach area were six, which are five more than in June. Uh, total reports taken, 426, 13 more than June. Total arrests were 231, 20 more than June. Juveniles were 20, so one more than in June, and adults were 211, which are 19 more than June. Total shots fired called were 29, which are nine less than June. Um, total firearm seize were 19, that's nine less than June, and speeding tickets were 69, 11 more than June. Citation was at 14, which are six more, and warnings were at 55, which is five more than in June. Flock, uh, and Raven case reports, uh, 16, which are two more than in June. Warrants, warrants issued, 134, 134 served, 22 recalled, a total cleared, were 156 for the month of June. Um, police social worker, Jocelyn Coburn, she had 75 referrals, she made 68 total contacts. Uh, referral source were, three were from reports, nine were from Patrol Division, one for Detective Bureau, 50 were self-referral, five were outside agencies, and seven was outreach referral type. Suicide ideation attempts were three, mental health were 16, substance abuse overdose were four, wellness checks, five. Juvenile issues, runaway were five, abuse neglect were two, homelessness, unstable housing, 10. Aging elderly were six, um, protective order were three. Seven were from victims of crimes, uh, one was autism, three were death, five were financial issues, and five were legal issues. Resources provided, uh, five were recovery supports, five were for community health, um, agencies. Uh, two were from counseling agency, other counseling agency. 13 were from emergency department, hospital, five were housing agency. Nine were shelters, five were employment services, and seven were other, deal with victim advocate, APS, family advocates, Porter Stark, and a MERC team. Any questions?
Councilman Nelson.
How you doing?
Good, sir.
Um, what is it, self-referral, is that somebody seeking help, or, how is that deemed?
Yeah, uh, so that's somebody, uh, that comes to the, comes to either the department or either, uh, calls into Jocelyn and, um, is needing some services or some help.
Mental health is deemed, I'm taking the Jocelyn, she deems them after.
Not that she, she doesn't say they're mental, but they need mental health services. So she refers them to those type of services that they need in the community.
Okay.
Yep.
Councilman Chris Belansky.
Uh, Chief, and I didn't get a chance, uh, to come to the gun violence, uh, meeting that took place at the, VFW a couple of weeks, a week ago or what have you. But anyway, at, at that time, or what I was going to bring up, is, you know, and I don't know if this has anything to do with it, but especially with the younger, younger people, you know, I think curfew, or what is curfew age, 18? You have to be in, I mean, what's?
Under, under 18, so 17 and under.
17 and under.
Uh, so during the week, I think 10:30 for all ages, uh, on the weekends, uh, up to 16, it goes up to 11:30. Um, 17, I think it's up to 12:30. I'm just running, so you have a state and a city ordinance that kind of mirror each other. I think that's right about the numbers I've been.
Okay, because I, you know, a lot of this activity that's going on, I don't know the exact ages of, you know, the people that are performing these kind of things. But, uh, what, what, what I would like to see on, on this report, okay, what are, you know, curfew violations, whether they're taken home, whether, you know, and I don't know, how, could you explain what you do to somebody if you pull, if you see them walking down the street, and they're underage, and they, they have a curfew violation? What does the police department do with a?
Um, they, so, curfews are, they're brought to the station, um, either we make the, the call to the parent, or either go to the center, and then the parent has to come to the center and pick them up. Kind of depends on, kind of like, how much more is in line with the curfew violation. Nine times out of 10, it's just a call to the parent from the department. But they will, but they can also go to the center where they have to be. Uh, intake is done, and then a parent is taught, is brought in, and then they are, um, they are then given more services through the center if needed.
Okay. I think the mayor wants, uh.
Yeah, and so, there is an ordinance that, um, I've been working with Tramell and Attorney Tramell and Attorney Amber on, um, that is utilizing some of the, uh, the ordinance language from Hammond and from Gary. Um, it's around, uh, gas stations and things that are open after from 11 to 5 a.m.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we, there's some historical data, I know that Chief just sent that to me, um, this week, so I wasn't ready to get it on this agenda.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but, we know that there's gas stations that a lot of these things have occurred at.
Mm-hmm.
So, and people are gathering between midnight and 5 o'clock in the morning. This is, this is when these things are occurring. And there's an ordinance that says that, um, they have to provide certain things in order to stay open during that timeframe. And, or, be subject to whatever, penalties, whatever, whatever. So that, that will be at the next council meeting, or, it's going to be sent to all of you to take a look at and see if there's a sponsor willing to sponsor it. But, um, it is a fact, um, that, uh, a lot, most of these things have occurred at one of these locations over the last several years. So why do we even have them open during those timeframes if that's where they're happening at? So, um, that will be on the next agenda for y'all.
Okay, I, I can appreciate that, but I still just want to go back to the general curfew rules and violations and enforcement to, uh, you know, if you're 18 or younger, and you're out at 1 o'clock in the morning, I think you belong somewhere else, and that's at home. And if the police have to take you home, then you're going there. Or if the police have to take you to the police station, then they can deal with it there. But yeah, I would like to see that on the report. How many curfew viol-
Yeah, and we can, and if, and if your, if your question is deemed to the recent, um, some recent violence, majority of those actors were over age 18, so.
No, it's, yeah, but it, it's not in relationship to that.
I was just saying, if it was.
Just in relationship to general, I guess, uh, general, uh, 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 law and order with the population of the, uh, city. And make, and make sure the police department is doing their part and making sure young people are at home when they're supposed to be. And I understand, you can't keep track of every teenager that's walking up and down the street or doing what's going on. But, I think we, if we start making a effort to say, hey, you're not going to be walking up and down Franklin Street at 2 o'clock in the morning, and you're 16 years old. You're going to get in a squad car, and we're going to take you to the police station, you can deal with it from there. And that might have a positive effect on the other kids, and the other teenagers that get wind of that.
Yeah, I added to the report, we've always enforced curfew violations, so, well, I added to the report for you.
Yeah, but I'd like to see that.
I added to the report.
On this.
Are there any other comments from the Councilwoman Mauden Hour?
Yes, I'm sorry, um, Chief Corley, I'm going to keep asking you what these alphabet soup things mean until they're spelt out. Um, SRO stands for?
School Resource Officer.
And then the next one is CMHC.
Community Health, uh, Center. Community Health Center.
Okay, and then under healthcare, it says MAT.
I would have to ask Jocelyn about that one.
Yeah, okay, it would be really helpful just to have those spelled out. I, not only for me, but I think for everybody's looking at the report. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I also wanna personally thank you for the, um, police squad car and patrol that's been provided for Warky Road. Um, the speeding down there, uh, by the construction trucks has slowed down significantly. So just thank you for getting upfront with that and, um, taking care of it. And I know the residents in that area are very appreciative also, so thank you.
No problem.
There are no further, uh, Dr. Cora.
Now, I just wanted to mention to Councilwoman Maldonar that M A T stands for Medication-Assisted Treatment, usually for substance abuse disorder.
Thank you, Dr. Cora. If there are no other comments or questions from the council, I believe that's all we have, Chief Corley.
Thank you.
Thank you. Last call for any reports from other city officers and departments. There are none, we will move on to our agenda. Madam Clerk, are there any petitions for this evening? There are no petitions. Madam Clerk, any communications for this evening?
Correspondence was received on August fifteenth from Kathleen Early regarding data center information and requests. Correspondence was also received on the fourteenth of August, uh, Firefighters Association Local Core Seventy-Five regarding opening contract negotiations. Correspondence was received on the thirteenth from Tom Zemek regarding petition, a position to the proposed drug rehabilitation facility at Anne and Wabash Street. Correspondence was received August fifth from the Indiana State Representative Pat Boy, listing the questions she asked at the Octo-, uh, Aug-, October, August fourth, council meeting regarding the proposed data center. A formal public hearing notice was received on August fifth regarding the proposed crew car wash located at forty-three fifty-third Franklin Street. And also the last one, August first, from Eileen Mark regarding the proposed data center project. That's it.
Okay, Madam Clerk, on our first resolution by title only, please?
A resolution by title only approving a resolution adopted by the Michigan City Redevelopment Commission regarding certain modifications to the local rules applicable to the Riverboat Alcohol Beverage License Program. And this is introduced by Ms. Tillman.
Thank you, and we have before you, um, Attorney Alan Sirnik, um, for, um, RDC and Mr. Skylar York for the planning.
Director of Redevelopment.
Redevelopment, my apologies.
Okay.
Evening, Council, I'm Alan Serenek, I'm the attorney for the Redevelopment Commission. Um, this resolution, the history, and I'll go real quick, is, is that in two thousand eight, the legislature passed creating-
Excuse me, we can barely hear you. There we go.
Can you hear me now? Is that all right?
Is? You can hear, it's on.
You want me to be in court?
Yeah.
All right.
There we go.
My court voice? Um, in two thousand eight, the state legislature passed the Riverboat, Riverboat District for three-way alcohol licenses for eligible people, interested, uh, tavern owners in an effort to create, um, rehabilitation, redevelopment in downtown areas throughout municipalities in Indiana. Um, this council in two thousand eight, by ordinance number, oh, I had that before, but by an ordinance, they created the Riverboat District for Michigan City. Um, in two thousand nineteen, the statute was changed, uh, expanding the districts to three thousand feet from the median of the riverfront, which in Michigan City's case is Trail Creek. Uh, so the two thousand eight original program that was designed and approved by the council was modified to include part of that, but not all of that. And I don't know the reason for that, it just happened that way. Um, recently, there have been interesting parties coming before the commission saying, well, we're within three thousand feet, but we're not within the riverfront district that the Redevelopment Commission and this council approved back in twenty nineteen. So part of this was created out of that. The other part was created when the River, uh, the Redevelopment Commission merged the North Tiff with the South Tiff, as well as expanded the previous, uh, uh, North Tiff down Michigan Boulevard to allow more areas of Michigan City to, uh, be able to have access to various types of tools for redevelopment, not the least of which was the alcohol, uh, permit program. So all's with this resolution is doing and what the commission has approved are two things. One is to expand the district to include, uh, the two thousand nineteen changes by the General Assembly. The second part on that, and what was originally approved, approved in two thousand eight, both by the state legislature and by the council, was a riverboat fund or a, 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 well, a riverboat marketing fund or whatever it was we wanna have at Riverfront, I'm sorry. I have too much Riverboat tonight, uh, Riverfront District. Um, and it wasn't, um, and it wasn't, and even though it was permitted and even though it was included within the original rules, it was never formalized. The commission is recommending to the council that in addition to expanding the districts, that the commission, that the council also approve, uh, this Riverfront District Fund and at the cost, uh, for anybody who receives a license at twenty-five hundred dollars a year. And then that money would go into a fund, again, created by the council, would be, um, controlled by the council in terms of where it would, what it should be spent on. Uh, but the Redevelopment Commission would still be responsible for ensuring that it was paid and ensuring the enforcement. So a liquor license is issued, they're not paying their twenty-five hundred dollars. After a couple of nasty messages and they still haven't paid, then that license will be revoked. But if they do, it would then go into a fund at your control. And that's all we're asking you to do tonight.
Dr. Cora?
So what are these funds used for?
The funds that would be paid every year?
Yes.
You would be, you would be dictating what those funds would be used for. Uh, it was contemplated in the original legislation that it would be set up as a dining, downtown dining district fund. Uh, keep in mind, you have, uh, the DORA now. There's looking for funding for how do you purchase the things that you need in that DORA? You could set it up and steer that money for DORA. You could steer that money to a dining district fund, advertising, events, things like that that go on inside that district. I think it's really open for, um, probably a discussion of what you wanna use that, use that money for. Um, we did not change the money that would be paid every year. It's always been contemplated that would be twenty-five hundred bucks. Uh, we're just basically implementing what we said we were gonna do, but we need, we would also have to come back to you for an ordinance to establish that fund.
Thank you.
Actually, can I do a point of order on myself? Because I actually should have went to public comment before coming to the council. Um, I would like to open up public comment on this resolution at this time. Are there any public comments on this resolution?
Good evening, Council, Paul Preszbalinski, seventeen sixteen Washington Street. I, I asked the question of the, uh, expand, is this expanding all these different districts? And how would it affect, uh, is it just in the business district, is it a declared area like Franklin Street? And how it's gonna affect the neighborhoods, uh, how much territory that's gonna be included?
Okay. Are there any other public comments on this resolution at this time?
Hello, Council, Scott Mellon, Turner Kenwood Place. I've been following this through many meetings. Um, this is an expansion of, of an existing, uh, template that we already have. The goal is to establish, uh, Michigan City as the Northwest Indiana's hot dining spot. This is a, a tool to help towards that, to get some more independent restaurants. And I think we really have to celebrate how many independent restaurants we have, especially on the north end. That, that's pretty unique. So this is a, a good thing, it is a very mapped area, it's within three thousand feet of the Trail Creek. A map has been generated to show what parcels are allowed in there. And you need to have a parcel within the zone that also meets the zoning and any other liquor-related thing to be granted one of these licenses. So this is not a free-for-all, but is a designated downtown area within three thousand feet of Trail Creek that encompasses most of downtown to, through, uh, to the train station, basically. Even a little further, so, uh, I think we, I, I think this is a good thing, I followed it and I think you should endorse it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mellon. This is the last call for public comment on this resolution. Public comments, public comments is now closed. Comments from the council, Councilman Preszbalinski?
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Uh, and this question is for-
Tim Block.
Skylar and Mr. uh, Zernik. So if this is, uh, how much do we, do we even have?
Excuse me?
Do we even have any idea of how much, uh, money this would generate on an annual basis?
Right now, you have, um, how many are out there? Uh, I think it's, I think we did some math, I wanna say twenty or thirty thousand dollars right now. Uh, I can't remember how many we have, I think we have ten. I think we have ten out there right now. And this would be retroactive, they would still have to, so, so it does not go forward, it would be the, the ten that are out there right now that are existing, they would need to be paying into this as well, now that we're establishing it. Because in our code, in this, in the original ordinance, it says, once this is established, you will pay this. So, um, we're establishing it. I think it's around twenty-five dollars.
So, so the total would be twenty-five thousand?
Yep.
Give or take?
Yep.
Okay.
Well, it could go up if we issue a new one, you would get another twenty-five hundred.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm, yeah, I, I understand that, okay. So we know how much money could possibly be, uh, established. And then, then what can the council dictate to what we want? I mean, I know, you know, we're going-
Yeah, totally.
But I mean, does that mean, you know, park benches?
I think it's a worth-
Trash receptacles?
Yeah.
You know, things like Bluetooth speaker system up and down the poles?
I, I, uh, I think it's, I think it's open for interpretation, I think it's a discussion, maybe we could have a, a discussion. We, we just didn't want to, uh, we, what the Redevelopment Commission didn't want to do is be in charge of everything that happened, having to come back to the Redevelopment Commission. We thought it'd be better to establish it, have you guys establish, you have to establish the ordinance or the, the fund by ordinance. But we didn't want to necessarily dictate what happens there because these aren't Tiff funds, these are revenue funds.
Mm-hmm.
So they're different, they're not, uh, they don't have the same strings attached to them, I'll say that.
And with that being said, so in other words, this is something that the council, that we can have a workshop on to have a discussion or a special meeting and to spearhead on what type of funds along with, um, the city controller and the, with the mayor.
Yeah, and if I could just address a couple of other things, uh, Mr. Mellon is correct. Um, so just because you're, you're, you're within a thousand, a three thousand square feet, or I'm sorry, three thousand feet, sorry, I've been working with square footage just today, three thousand feet, doesn't mean you automatically qualify, there are boxes you have to check. The zoning has to be correct. So we're only for full-service restaurants, okay? So it has to be family-friendly, full-service restaurants, it can't just be a bar, it has to be a restaurant. Uh, so you can't put a bar and a restaurant in a single-family house if it's not zoned appropriately. You still have all the other building codes that have to be met, ingress, egress, ADA, et cetera. So it really does start to limit down what you can do. Just because you're three thousand feet and you're in, you also have to check, uh, the box on you have to be inside the redevelopment area. You have to be three thousand feet inside the redevelopment area, that's kind of the starting point of this whole thing. But you still have to check your zoning code and everything else that has to match up. So there's a lot of hierarchical things that have to be checked off.
And also, there is an application for this process as well.
Yes, as, we created an application this time. One of the other goals of this was really to clean up the process of how we do this. Uh, because, uh, we had just made copies of copies of copies of ordinances and we basically took all of this and compiled it into one, uh, resolution. So it's very easy to understand, has an application with it. And the other thing we wanna do is take the, um, the map and put that online with a, with a, an underlying, I wanna call it a, a widget, if you will, where you can click on the parcel and it tells you, yes, I may qualify. You still have to go through the qualifications and application process, though. Is your zoning right, is your, is, you know what I mean, things of that nature, is it a full-service restaurant, et cetera?
Councilman Nelson?
Um, just a quick question, how did y'all go about determining this circumference?
So, so that circumference is based upon the middle of the river and three thousand feet out. That's what the law, the state law allowed us to do, and that's it. That's literally the circumference, three thousand feet out. Keep in mind, though, what you're seeing in color, that is the redevelopment area. So again, three thousand feet inside a redevelopment area, that's really your starting points.
And the red line is what?
The, that's your circumference, this is circumference.
Mm-hmm.
So just because it's three thousand feet, if it's not inside a redevelopment area or the riverfront area that you, we will designate, you won't, you won't qualify. Those, those are the two major things you have to check.
Okay.
By law.
Okay.
By statute.
Thanks.
Councilman Beatry?
I'm kinda looking at this, um, in reference to the DORA that we approved. Um, several people have come up for the podium and asked, uh, what's, how are you gonna enforce this? How are you gonna provide the things that you have to provide? I was thinking of Sagatuck, Michigan, because Sagatuck has a DORA. And in Sagatuck, if, once you walk so far, there's a decal on the street that says you're leaving the DORA, you can no longer have an open container. And there's a, a trash can there, and that's provided by Sagatuck. Well, that's the kind of thing that we've talked about on and off. And I think this would allow us to do that, to put a decal down, to put a trash can down, to determine what the container's gonna look like, how it's gonna be different from anything else. So I, this, I think this is a funding mechanism that we've been missing, and I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, I mean, to, Mr., uh, Councilman Beatry, if I may, that, that was kind of my thought with it. I don't wanna dictate, put words in your mouths, but, um, you know, I, I think it's a good idea. It's a, it's an additional funding mechanism to be used flexibly. And I think the DORA is a prime example of that, especially when you have events downtown and things of that nature and put those, and getting certain labeling out there, signage, et cetera.
Are there any other comments from the council? If there are none, I'd like to entertain a motion for approval.
Motion to approve, support.
A motion by Councilman Preszbalinski and a second by Mr. Beatry. Madam Clerk, on the vote, please.
Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Mr. Preszbalinski?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Beatry?
Aye.
Mr. Coulter?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Dr. Cor?
Aye.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
And Ms. Maldonar?
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
And this motion, resolution has passed. Thank you. Madam Clerk, on our next resolution by title only for this evening?
A resolution by title only, a resolution of the common council of the City of Michigan City, Indiana, approving an order of the City of Michigan City Plan Commission, approving a certain declaratory resolution for a consolidated economic development area adopted by the Michigan City Redevelopment Commission. And this is also introduced by Ms. Tillman.
Um, thank you. In regards to this, uh, resolution, I will have, um, Mr. York to come up to the podium and this is in reference to the solar project.
That is correct, I'm, I'm Skylar York, Director of Redevelopment. Uh, this is a, um, you may recall, you passed some, um, bonds in the lap bond, um, ordinances in the last council meeting. You also did, um, an EID, Economic Improvement District in the last council meeting. This is just the follow-up. So what we had to do to establish the Tiff, to, to pay that Tiff bond, is declare a new, a new, uh, boundary or new area, if you will. Um, the Redevelopment Commission passed a declaratory resolution. That declaratory resolution then went to Planning Commission. Uh, and now it's before you as approving the declaratory resolution. And then it comes back to the Redevelopment Commission as, and we do a confirmatory resolution. Um, online tonight, I do have Mr. Tom Everett, uh, who's Barnes and Thornburg. He actually drafted this resolution, if you like, uh, to ask, uh, I, I hope I stated everything correctly, Tom? Have I, have I stated it correctly or did I miss anything?
Yep, no, that, uh, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Yep, no, uh, Skylar, you, you said it perfectly and would just add that at the, uh, the Redevelopment Commission meeting in September, um, the, the Redevelopment Commission will hold a public hearing um, on the declaratory resolution before then finally adopting the confirmatory resolution.
Yes, and then this will lock in that boundary for that Tiff bond to be, this will lock in the Tiff boundary and then that will establish where the Tiff is drawn from, from that boundary to pay the bond that you auth, that you, um, authorized. the bond that you auth, that you, um, authorized at the last, uh, meeting.
I'd like to open this up for public comment on this resolution. Are there any public comments on this resolution?
Hello, Scott Mellon, Turner Kenwood Place. I've been following this as well through all those various things, and this is really simple. I think we're all gonna vote yes on this, but if you want SOLO to have a chance of going forward, you say yes today. If you wanted to die a, an ugly death, you vote this down. So I hope you endorse this and pass this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mellon. Are there any other public comments on this resolution?
Paul, Prince Belinski, seventeen sixteen Washington Street. Um, I also know that you're gonna vote yes for this, but my question is, how much and when are we gonna receive tax revenue off the SOLO project since the, uh, the establishment of this internal TIF? I'd like to know when, because you all have been hit up on how you're hung up on monies. And that's a issue to look at on the designing of these things, if you want to do them in the future, is how long is it gonna take to get some money out of that project? Thank you.
Thank you. This is gonna be the last call for public comment. Last call for public comment on this resolution. Public comments are now closed. Comments from the council, Councilman Dabney.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Councilman Dabney, second by Dr. Cora. Madam Clerk, on the vote, please.
Mr. Prince Belinski?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Beatry?
Aye.
Mr. Coulter?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Dr. Cora?
Aye.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Molyneux?
Aye.
And Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
And this resolution has passed, and congratulations to SOLO to your next step in this project.
Thank you so much, Council, for both resolutions. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please read our first ordinance by title only?
An ordinance on first reading by title only, approving additional appropriation of the Budget of the Park Concession Non-Reverting Fund, number twenty-five oh seven, to construct a new Wings of Wonder Avery exhibit at Washington Park Zoo. And this is introduced by Mr. Dabney.
And does the sponsor have any comments at this time?
The only comment I have at this time is that Shannon Eason, uh, Park Department, uh, Director Superintendent, is gonna come up and talk about this, and Jamie Huss, also Director of Zoo.
Good evening, Council. Shannon Eason, Park Superintendent. So this request is to appropriate funding out of our cash balance, which is in our non-reverting concession fund. So it's not additional money for the city. We're just asking you to move it into our budget, um, so we can complete construction on this exhibit. I'll let Jamie go into the reasons why we need this done, and it's a fairly urgent project. I did give you a breakdown, um, of other funding that we've identified. Our gifts and donations account, our endowment account. We do have some budgeted money for capital outlay. Um, and then again, if you would appropriate two eighty-nine, one oh nine, that will get us to our construction budget. Um, we are at ninety-eight percent engineered right now. So it's a beautiful exhibit. Um, again, it's urgent, it's necessary, and I will let Jamie explain why.
Okay.
Hi, uh, thank you for letting me explain why. Uh, basically, Avery is one of the most popular exhibits at zoo. Um, it's interactive. Uh, we have over two hundred parakeets, cockatiels, that you can buy seed stick for and feed them if you want to. If you don't want to, there's no feed. Enter the exhibit. It's just another attraction to, um, welcome guests and kind of offset the cost for the Avery. Right now, it's just a seasonal exhibit, so it has, uh, numbers. So sixty-two to about eighty-two is a good weather parameter. If you get rain, it's gotta close because birds don't do well in the rain with that many people going through. Um, so, and then you also have avian flu, which is a, uh, a, uh, disease that's just gonna keep changing. It's, it's just gonna keep, um, affecting birds. It's gonna, you'll find new hosts. Um, so by having an enclosed Avery that is all temperature-controlled, not only does it make the birds safer, it also can help increase revenue by making it a, uh, more all-season exhibit. So right now, we have to catch, move all these birds twice a year, in and out, based on the weather. And that just, and all the stress on the birds, not, you know, not easy for the keepers. And, uh, I just think this would be a nice way to, the first thing you walk in the zoo is the big cat exhibit and this exhibit. So it'd be a nice way to update that, to make it up to the COVID four U.S. state requirements, too.
And just a little fun fact, last year, um, the zoo sold sixteen thousand three hundred and twenty-six seed sticks for a dollar a piece. So that's, um, pretty good revenue for one seed stick. And if we can extend our season, um, I expect that number to grow.
Okay. Um, I'd like to open this up for public comment on this ordinance.
Uh, yes, this is Tommy Kalavich from thirteen sixteen Ohio Street. Hey, do you know when the best time is to buy a baby birdie for the aviary exhibit for the Washington Park Zoo? When it goes cheap. What, what does a, what does a duck at the aviary exhibit like to have in soup? Quackers! And finally, what does Councilman Bryant Dabney and our, um, American bird have in common? They're both bald eagles. I could go on and on. I got a million of them. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to withdraw our request, please.
Are there any other, are there any other public comments that, on this ordinance? Are there any other public comments on this ordinance? This is the last call for public comments on this ordinance. Public comments are now closed. Any comments from the council? Councilman Prince Belinski?
Yeah, Madam President, I'd like to be added as a, uh, co-sponsor on this ordinance.
Madam Clerk, if you would please add, Councilman Prince Belinski, Councilwoman Molyneux.
Um, I really want to acknowledge, um, Jamie and her staff, um, for the vision that they have for our zoo and the community, and for being proactive about protecting our birds that live there. So just from the bottom of my heart, thank you very much. Um, you are very responsible and also very caring. So, um, thank you. May I be added as a co-sponsor also? Since you have one, make it two.
Are there any other council members that would like to be added on to this ordinance at this time?
Yes, please.
Me, too.
That was Councilman Beatry, Councilwoman Lee, and Dr. Cora.
Thank you.
Thank you. There are no other comments on this ordinance at this time. This will be carried over to our next council meeting for second reading and possibly third.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, on our next ordinance on second reading by title only?
An ordinance on second reading by title only, establishing a municipal motor vehicle license excise surtax and municipal wheel tax, increasing Division Four excise wheel surtax and wheel tax in Article Six Finance and Chapter Two Administration in the Michigan City Municipal Code. And this is introduced by Mr. Dabney and Ms. Molyneux.
And do either of the, uh, sponsors have any comments? Councilman Dabney?
Uh, no comment about the, uh, the ordinance and that the mayor came up and gave a, a great explanation of what's going on there.
Councilwoman Molyneux?
Yeah, I just want to reemphasize what I said at the last meeting is that this was one of the platforms that I ran on, um, for Ward Six, the city council, was to, um, pass this wheel tax, um, realizing that we've been leaving hundreds of thousands of dollars on the table for many years now. And also that this actually is the highest number of complaints that I receive from residents of Michigan City regarding potholes and, um, broken pavement. So I think this is definitely a step in the right direction to providing our residents with services that they are requesting of us. So I think it'd be very wise, um, to pass this. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll open this up for public comment on this ordinance.
Ernie Hollerhand, three oh two Gladys Street. It, this ordinance is, they, they, they don't leave me much to vote on because if you don't vote for it, we're gonna lose in the long run. Downstate is, is gonna cut us bad. I mean, it's gonna, it's gonna ding me pretty good. I have two vehicles, so I'll have to pay tax on two vehicles, but if it, you know, if it helps keep money coming from downstate, I don't mind.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments on this ordinance?
Hello again, friends. Scott Mellon, Turner Kenwood Place. The state isn't leaving you any choice. And I think that people really need to understand that Senate Bill One and whatever this SEA One are, are essentially forced in the hands of municipalities. So the legislators in Indianapolis can say they have lowered our taxes to the people of Mich, uh, to the people of Indiana. But they're pulling funding, but they're pulling funding and forcing the locals to raise fees any way they can. That said, I think you should wrap the Band-Aid off. And if you're going to do this, which you pretty much have to impose this excise tax, I recommend you do it at the twenty-five-dollar level. Uh, the difference between the minimum, seven dollars and fifty cents, seventeen-dollar difference in today's economy, that's a lunch, I hate to say. So let's pull the Band-Aid off, get the twenty-five dollars, get the six hundred thousand dollars to reduce the burn on everything else. And I think it's just what we have to do. And I have three vehicles, so it's gonna affect me, too. It's gonna affect all of us. But that's just what the state house is doing to all of us. Don't blame these guys. Blame the state. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mellon. This is the last call for public comment.
Paul, Prince Belinski, seventeen sixteen Washington Street. I disagree with that last orientation, is that you can pass it at the minimum and still access the ex, the extra money. And also, the, uh, mayor said, if you pass it. So I would like to know a total amount of the wheel tax and excise tax put together, on what level that the ordinance says that you're gonna pass it at right now, the way the ordinance is written? I haven't seen the ordinance. Can the chair, uh, answer that question? It's a
This is
It's a germane question.
Excuse me. It is on the handouts that, that was passed out?
I didn't, I did not
So this is not a Q and A, sir. This is com, public comment. And if, it, excuse me.
Excuse me.
So because this is a comment, we are taking in the questions that you're proposing, and we can follow back up with you.
Well, okay.
But the information that you're asking has been shared during the presentation that was done today, and there was a workshop yesterday that had all this information available. And that was publicly put out there.
Madam Chair, as I did not attend the workshop yesterday because I was attending a hearing on a building in the second ward that some people want to tear down. Uh, but with that being said, I believe that you can pass it at the minimum and still get your money. And it doesn't matter at the, you gotta go and get all the money, because here is the, here is the problem, the way I see it. They already said that a lot of these economical cars are causing this hindrance on the state highway fund. That was announced by the state. They made that announcement earlier this year. So my, my theory is the way I look at it, I think that everybody missed the boat here, because I think that all these cars that are eco-friendly should be taxed more. Because I'm paying more in gasoline taxes because I have a V-eight motor, and it is economical, all right, for a V-eight, but it uses more gas to go fifty miles than my Jeep that is a two-o turbocharged, okay? The point in being is that I think that you should pass it at the minimum and then work on better legislation at the state level, that there's a criteria set up by the Bureau of Motor Vehicles to collect this. And I would also like to know how much the state gets for administrating this mess. I don't think we need to pass it at the highest level, because you got a lot of people that can't afford, I totally disagree, that can't afford that twenty-five-dollar level. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening again. Um, so I, uh, Mayor Angie, one twenty-six Lady Lane, um, I agree, um, so is it, what, what, um, Mr. Privalinsky just shared is absolutely correct, that the gasoline tax and all the taxes that make up the motor vehicle fund and all those things, um, aren't equitable. Um, I think that this flat rate that they have enacted, uh, is a way of them spreading it across everyone equally, is what they are trying to do. Um, I will say that minimum, maximum, at the minimum rate, remember, the additional funds that are unlocked, we don't get them until twenty-twenty-seven. So it's not like we get that additional funding mechanism, um, after this is passed. The reason why I think the maximum is needed, the twenty-five dollars, which is about seven cents a day, is because, again, we're using the riverboat funds to supplement everything that deals with the street department. One of the things that we're looking at is maybe we're not doing, going for the maximum, the CCMG, but we do want to purchase the equipment to do paving in-house. That, that's about two million dollars in equipment. We know that. So we know that, um, the bids keep getting higher and higher. There's only one or two or three that maybe bid on these projects, and it's expensive, um, with the CCMG bids and that process. But if we can, um, allow our own employees to do the paving on some of these smaller roads, um, and do some of the milling and all of that, I'd rather spend their money on that equipment for us to do it in-house because one thing I do know with the state legislation, they want the extreme version of this pass, and they're gon, gonna get it at some point. And, um, we had AIM there last night. They said it. Their goal is to force you to have it to even get CCMG. I don't think we're gonna be able to go backwards. They are full throttle on making it mandatory. Um, but this was their compromise for this year. I think it's only gonna get worse, and CCMG is gonna be tied to this, or CCMG may go away. There's a lot of things that are gonna happen. And in the meantime, we need to get the money while we can, uh, because I see that happening. I see property taxes going away. I see a lot of the stuff that they're pushing for, and it's gonna get worse every single year. So we need to, to get the money while we can, uh, before it goes away, because that's what's happening. Um, they're gonna continue down this same path. We're seeing it at the federal level, and we're seeing it at the state level. So I hope you support it.
Thank you. Comments from the council? Councilman, uh, Councilman Dabney?
I will allow, uh, Councilwoman Molyneux to go first, because what I'm gonna do is just, uh, ask for suspension on the rules and go second and third reading tonight.
Thank you, Councilman Dabney. Um, I wanted to point out that, um, electric vehicles do pay an additional fee. It's a tax. Um, they pay it when they get their annual, um, license plate. It is two hundred and twenty-one dollars. And also hybrids in Indiana, they pay an additional tax of seventy-four dollars per year when they get their license, their plate for their cars. So the legislature already directed how to make up for that inequality when they're not buying gasoline or they're not buying as much gasoline. So that's already been taken care of.
Thank you. Councilman Dabney?
That's the
Councilman Prince Belinski?
Uh, yeah. Well, I can tell the public right now that I support this ordinance going forward. The reasons being, and I don't love the, I have to, I'll pay the same tax as everybody else. But the information that I'm receiving, the information I'm getting, is looking at the city's finances, and we can use this money supplemented into the, uh, CCMG to pay that down. And if we go the full amount, uh, to, to answer, uh, Mr. Prince Belinski's question, the maximum rate for the, uh, wheel tax would be forty dollars, and, uh, surtax with a maximum rate of twenty-five dollars. Okay? So that's what the maximum rates are. And I'm gonna vote for the maximum rates, because I want to make sure we get as much money as we can on, out of this. And I don't know how much more, you know, the additional six hundred thousand dollars of blacktop
And I don't know how much more, you know, the additional $600,000 of blacktop, I was trying to get that information today, but I don't know how much more that'll do. But just by looking at some, a majority of the streets in Michigan City, take for example, I don't know how much it would take to blacktop Wabash Street or Washington Street from Michigan Boulevard to Ames Field, but I'm thinking that that would take maybe well over a million dollars, a million and a half dollars. So where's that money going to come from when it comes time to do it? I mean, there's spider web cracks all over that street right now, and that was promised to be crack sealed four years ago, and it hasn't been done yet. And I'm not blaming anybody for that in case Sean is watching tonight, but no, and I don't think that that's his, his problem. But I don't trust the state of Indiana, I don't say, I don't not trust the governor, and I'm not making this political, but I'm just talking from the heart as a citizen of this state that nobody wants to pay taxes. You know, no, we're going to cut your property taxes, but you make up the difference. You know, we heard this before from the previous administration, too. And, you know, being, being in business, or anyone being surrounded by business, okay, go out there and cut your costs, but you know what? Keep providing the same service you do every day, and keep working 10 hours a day. But instead of making $10 an hour, you're going to make $8 an hour, and you make up that other $2 on your own. It doesn't, in my mind, it doesn't work. In the state of Indiana, I think that was right last night, the gentleman from AIM said that we have a $2 billion rainy day fund, that nobody wants to give up any money. And I understand why, because in the long run, from a business standpoint, if you're the governor, you know, you want outside businesses to look at what you have, what your reserves are, how you're running things, below costs and all that. I get that, but you know what? So who's going to pay for it? Everybody sitting right here in this room, everybody sitting up here in those council chambers is paying for what the decisions they made down there. So if you have any problems with this, I would suggest that you call Governor Braun, and you can call State Representative Jim Pressel, who lives right over here in La Port, who's in charge, I believe, of this roads and whatever committee he's on, he's the chairman of it, and he comes up with this idea. So that's what I have to say about this, but I will support it. Thank you.
Councilman Dr. Cora?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. You know, at a time when inflation is going, is high and is going to go up because of tariffs and affordability is an issue, raising taxes is not a good thing. But having said that, with the legislation that has been passed in the General Assembly with linking some of these road funds to the passage of this wheel tax, and with the Senate Enrolled Act I and changes in the property taxes, we're going to get, according to our mayor, a million dollars less next year. And then if we want to avoid excessive reliance on the riverboat money, we have to pass this tax, that way we have money to take care of our roads. And if we don't have good roads, it's not good for our citizens, it's not good for business, and it'll not be good for the future of our city. So that's the reason why we need to do this, and I'm going to be supporting this.
Thank you, Dr. Cora, Councilman Dabney.
All righty, and I thought I had a comment, but thank you, Dr. Cora and Councilman Prisbalinski. So I will now suspend the rules and ask for third reading tonight on this ordinance.
Support.
Support.
We have a motion to suspend by Councilman Dabney and a second by Councilwoman Tillman. Madam Clerk, on the roll call, please.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Beatrix?
Aye.
Mr. Coulter?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Dr. Cora?
Aye.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Maldenour?
Aye.
Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
And Mr. Prisbalinski?
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Madam Clerk, on third reading on this ordinance, please.
An ordinance on third reading by title only, establishing a municipal motor vehicle license excise surtax and municipal wheel tax and creating Division Four in Article Six in Chapter Two in the Michigan City Municipal Code. And this is introduced by Mr. Dabney and Ms. Maldenour.
Are there any comments from the sponsors?
Yes, yes, one last comment. And the reason we're going second and third reading tonight, or I'm going second and third reading, if you saw on the presentation that the mayor was giving there, this needs to be passed by September 1st. We have no more council meetings before September 1st. So this is why we're doing this tonight, to get this done.
Thank you. I would like to open this up again for public comment. Are there any public comments on this ordinance? Public comments on this ordinance?
Ernie Hollahan, 302 Gladys Street. When you consider this ordinance, you best consider the tariffs and all of this that Trump's putting on, it's gone to increase the price of everything. Your asphalt's going to go up. Everything is going to go up, so you have to compensate and realize that that's coming. Once these tariffs hit, you're going to pay more for food, well, you're already paying more for food, but you're going to pay more for asphalt, for sure, because there's oil in asphalt.
Thank you.
Uh, yes, this is Tommy Kalovic, 1316 Ohio Street. You know, I'll pass this, maybe somewhere down the road, if things change in the world, maybe you can, you know, we put these taxes on, and there's never any chances of ever repealing them. So if that ever happens one day, I'd like to have this repealed if it's necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. Any public comments on this ordinance?
Paul Prisbalinski, 1716 Washington Street. I would like to ask, since I talked about passing this at the minimum, and then the mayor got up here and said, you got to, it sounded to me like you had to go for the full amount to hit the next bucket. I'd like to get clarification on what is the amount of money at the rate to get there so you don't have to tax everybody the full amount right away?
Yeah, I didn't say that. But you just have to pass the wheel tax to get the second bucket of money. You don't have to pass it. That's why I showed minimum and maximum. To unlock the lane mile distribution, you just have to pass the excise and wheel tax. It doesn't equate to minimum or maximum. So you could do either to get that $200 plus thousand in 2027. That's the year it starts. But it's just passing the, the wheel tax. But yeah, there's no min or max, you just have to pass it at whatever rate that you want to pass it at. In the document that I passed out earlier, yeah, it has on here the total amounts on the slide, and you have it in your presentation, the total amount for the maximum, so that I can give that to the public again, is 600, let me get to the page. Yeah, no, I'm just going to read it. $638,783,000 is the maximum estimated revenue. The minimum estimated revenue, if we, and I was just having this conversation with Mr. Euler, is $183,688. The, the maximum that we can pass on commercial vehicles is 40 bucks. I wish, I think that could be higher, but it's not. And then for, they take care of businesses, man. And then the maximum for passenger vehicles is $25. And then in our calculator that we use, and I shared this in the presentation, like for motorcycles, we have $15, motor-driven cycles, $10. So we did adjust some of those other things in that calculator, but if you go to Purdue LTAP, there's a calculator, you can put the numbers and stuff in and play with it. But the maximum is what the cities that have passed it have passed it at the maximum, because we'll be back here in another year and a half trying to pass it again. So that's the reason why I presented it as the maximum. But it had nothing to do with unlocking the other bucket. You can pass it at whatever rate for that bucket.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, I guess that answers the, the big elephant in the room question. All you have to do is pass the tax. I want you to think about how many people are, the poverty rate in this city, how many retired people are in this city, and that, okay, you can all say, yeah, we need to tax, we're going to have to do the tax, but you don't have to do it at the max. So I would suggest that you guys table this, come up with some figures, and have a special meeting. And not, because you just heard, you don't have to, you do not have to take it at the max rate. And I know some people try to sugarcoat it for you, but there's going to be a lot of people shell-shocked by this.
We're doing a special.
Absolutely.
This will be last public comment.
Scott Mellon, 200 place. Nobody likes, nobody likes higher taxes. Nobody in this room likes higher taxes. I am not pro-wheel tax or excise tax, but we're being forced to do it. I've paid, we call it a city sticker in a city I used to live in, large city to the west of us. Their city sticker's over $100 a month now, I think, a year. I think it's $130 now. $25 in 2027? I'm sorry, it's nothing. It's, or, yeah, $25. I, I thought 40 for a second. That's still nothing in today's economy. And I'm, I'm retired. I live in a house of retired people. I have a fixed income, but this is something that needs to be done, I hate to say it. $25 is frankly de minimis in today's economy, in my opinion. If you can't afford an extra $17.50, you probably can't afford a car, or insurance, or gas, or an oil change, or tires. The, the extra $17 between minimum and maximum is not going to change anybody's life. Thank you.
Public comments are now closed. Comments from the council, Councilman Dabney?
Yeah, one of 80 percent. I live in the world, you know.
I was looking for any other council comments, but I see none, so motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Dabney, second by Dr. Cora. Madam Clerk, on the vote, please.
Mr. Beatrix?
Aye.
Mr. Coulter?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Mr. Dabney, it's your vote.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Dr. Cora?
Aye.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Maldenour?
Aye.
Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Mr. Prisbalinski?
Aye.
And Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
And this order has passed. Next on our agenda, we have new business. The Mayor Angie is requesting the advice and consent of the Michigan City Common Council regarding her reappointment of Jennifer Birchfield to the Michigan City Tree Board, and her term beginning immediately and expires August 1, 2028. We can vote tonight, since we have no other, it's just, okay.
I'd move, grant consent.
This is second.
Second.
Motion by who?
Motion by Mr. Beatrix, second by Dr. Cora. Madam Clerk, on the vote for the nomination for reappoint, I'm sorry, for the reappointment of Jennifer Birchfield to the Michigan City Tree Board?
Mr. Coulter?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Dr. Cora?
Aye.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Maldenour?
Aye.
Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Mr. Prisbalinski?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
And Mr. Beatrix?
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, and congratulations for the reappointment to Jennifer, to the Michigan City Tree Board. Next, we have unfinished business nominations. The council has one appointment with the Michigan City Police Civil Service Commission encumbered Lila Simmons. Terms expire September 7, 2025. Applications received, Cheryl Krasinski, Shawna Hill, and Scott Mealan. I would like to open up nominations, because we have these three councilmen rags, can we do them individually by acknowledging their name to vote? Okay.
Can I place a nomination?
Yes, nominations are open. Madam?
Say it?
Yes.
Scott. I'd like to nominate Scott. Support.
Are there any other nominations?
Madam President?
Yes.
Yeah, Cheryl Krasinski.
Support. Yeah. I didn't think so.
Yes, this is open nominations for the three that are solicited. Madam Clerk, I would like to nominate Cheryl Krasinski.
I just.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'd be on the vote, sorry. Are there any other nominations at this time? So we have two for Cheryl and two for Mr. Mealan. So.
It's a nominee.
Just, right, just the nomination, I'm just saying, we just have two for those. And this will be carried over for a vote at our next council meeting.
Okay.
Well, at this time, we will open this up for public comments. Public comments are three minutes.
Yeah, this is Tommy Kalovic from 1316 Ohio Street. This is an exciting time of year for me always, the high school football season kicks off Friday night, and we got a home game with the Hanover Central. It's a good thing that it's a home game, they probably had to send their bus over here for us to go to Cedar Lake if we play, played over there. Now, they just did a, did a really nice upgrade of the bleachers, they just put in a really nice new digital scoreboard. You know, our old one 30 years ago is kind of getting worn out, all the balls were missing, it's going to be really nice. I want to thank the American Legion Post, Yacht Post 451, for always hosting our, our team, the team meal every Thursday night. I know you guys sponsor one of those at once during the season. Yeah, so, I want to thank, I hope they catch the coppers, took all the catalytic converters off of the, I, I think it's really, really, really nice, I know the New Prairie in Warsaw, they, they sent some of their school buses over here, so at least tomorrow we can take our elementary students to school, maybe somewhere we can get everybody back in the classroom. I'm sure that'll be all taken care of in, in a heartbeat. Just want to thank you, good job, and keep up the good work, council.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments?
Paul Prisbalinski, 1716 Washington Street. I would like to comment on the comment that was made by Councilman Prisbalinski about Wabash Street, and I would take it one step further about Washington Street in Michigan City, that it has surpassed its life. It has not been, it was on a repave schedule, and it was somehow omitted, and it has over one-inch cracks in the pavement that, according to the manual, are not repairable. It's, it's lived its life. And I think that since you've passed this tax, is that we become more transparent with how this money's being spent out, that need, maybe have a workshop for the public to come in and talk about their streets that they think need to be repaired. Because there are, there are quite, there are a few of them that are, should be no questions asked. Also, the, I recently went, and I'm going to try to make this as quick as I can, I disagree with that synopsis on eco, environmentally friendly cars. Most of the cars are, according to the gas standards, eco-friendly. But I'm telling, I am telling you that people that have V8s, and they have valve train adjustments, get better gas mileage, and since they changed the law by our representative in Valparaiso and increased that gas tax, that I am paying my fair share at the pump. I am. I own a couple V8s, and I own them for different reasons. I'm paying the same gas tax, and there's a lot of other people that are paying it, too, at the pump. And I think that you need to do a better job at the, maybe hiring a consultant with the, the state organization that you belong in on doing some legislative work down there with, through city and towns and the state, because this is. Cause this is a real, this is a real sham. How can you have a surplus in the highway fund and then you don't have a surplus? Okay? Well, remember when this is enacted and the people go to the license branch? I am not gonna hold back and I'm gonna tell them, well, you need to, you need to talk to your legislators in the city about it, okay? Because I don't, I don't think you had to go that this far. I really don't. And I, I think that when people are shell shocked because you don't realize that, that just a few years ago, they increased the B M B fees. Thank you.
Thank you, there's a gentleman standing in the back to, are you waiting to speak, sir? Okay.
Uh, good evening, I'm Matthew Marshawn, sixty-one Timber Trail. I'm a relatively, uh, new resident of Michigan City. Uh, I have concerns about the data center. Um, our home is about two-thirds of a mile from the data center. That's, I guess, proposed or that's happening, we're not really sure. And I guess I, I'm really wanting to get some clarification or hoping to get some clarification soon about what's actually happening there. Um, is it a cloud center? Is it an A I center? Is it a Bitcoin mining center? All three of them present different challenges. Um, what, what are the mitigations that this company is willing to take for the noise, the noises especially, um, proven to be detrimental to, to health? My wife has hearing issues. We're very concerned about her health and we just sunk a ton of money into Michigan City and, uh, and then this has dropped pretty close to us, so we're concerned about it. Um, are the fans gonna be liquid cooled? Are they gonna have acoustic louvers? Um, wh- wh- what really is going in there? Uh, I, I, I'd like to know, just so I can make an informed decision about, um, where I'm gonna live. And how, and also how long will this take? It's my understanding that some of these centers can take three to five years to develop cause they, they take very specific elec- electrical needs and electricians to develop them. Um. There's schools nearby, uh, this, some of these data centers, if it's an A I or Bitcoin mining center, uh, the noise that they produce has been proven to be very detrimental to children. There's all this housing that's being developed on try, on, on Tryon Road, excuse me, um, that's so close to the data center and has that been taken into account? Uh, there's light pollution, um, all across the country. And I understand the need for these data centers, I mean, we all use our phones, we all are gonna be relying on artificial intelligence. But all across the country, everyone's energy costs, you're talking about twenty-five dollars for a wheel tax? I mean, people's energy cost in Georgia went up twenty, thirty percent. That's real money. Um, anyway, thank you for listening to me, appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am. Can we stop the clock, please?
Uh, yeah. Yeah, this is your chance.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Mealan was next.
Hello, Scott Mellon, two hundred kind of place, I've got a bunch of things, I'm gonna try to go fast, I know our parliamentarian is such a disciplinarian. Um, we, we've recently imposed a lot of new refuse, we, we imposed new refuse ordinance at the start of this year. It started January first. We're two-thirds of the way through the year, halfway through the eighth month. When are we gonna start enforcement? Have we been writing any citations to people or warning notices? Have we stopped picking up garbage for the large apartment complexes? Uh, have we notified commercial users that still have our refuse bins in service? Have they been notified? Why are we picking up commercial garbage? Why is there a restaurant I know of with five bins behind it for the city to pick up? And why is this still happening eight months into the year? That's enough time, it's time to crack a whip. We have lots of city employees and lots of city vehicles driving through the city streets every single day. People see things. There needs to be a central internet or a Slack channel or some form where somebody can say, hey, there's been some fly dumping over here by the car washer, hey, right behind Zorn Brewery where they have an event, there's a fly infestation because of somebody dumping out their, their apartment in the alley behind them and the food's rotting, breeding flies. Boy, I'm glad I didn't have that wedding reception on Saturday. Um, we've had people come before this, um, body and asking for discounts on city building permits generally for nonprofits. And we all wanna support our nonprofits as well as our other businesses, but I would suggest instead of taking things to zero cause goose eggs just kill averages, maybe think about fifty percent reductions in permit fees if you're thinking of granting relief to organizations because we do have a budget crisis hidden us full on. Mayor didn't say it, nobody said it today. You guys cut five or six million dollars out of this year's budget from last year, nearly ten percent of the budget, six million dollars. Great feat. Mayor's also been really good at getting grants and getting, we got an extra bunch of paving done last year. Uh, so there is a lot of good, discount permits, road closure fees, we have people come before the border works and ask for road closures for various things. We don't charge any fees for that. If we're providing a city service of blocking streets, providing police, uh, of city time to approve plans, there should be a fee. It could be a nominal fee for nonprofits or churches, twenty-five to fifty dollars, but something like a beer festival or something serving alcohol, it probably should be more substantial to account for the cost to the city. The city can't. It's not gonna be the way it used to be, folks. We don't have forty-two factories, it's not nineteen seventy anymore. What we have is a government at the state level pulling money back. Here yourself, Paul. Um. But they're putting us in a position where we have to raise revenue and we can't do things the way we always did. I think it's great the refuse service we've had in Michigan City. But again, when nobody else is doing this for free and we have a budget problem, it's a pretty easy answer that we have to change how things are done. And I pay bills just like everybody else, I am a senior retired person, it turns out. And I don't like spending more for living either. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, there was, oh, sir. You said this.
My printer gave out at home right before this meeting, so I hate to read from my phone, but, um, I'm still stuck on all these bird, bird puns, pardon me?
Could you please state your name?
John Carrington, one forty Esther Street. Um, and the fellow over here in the overalls, I'm, I'm not gonna wing it, just so you know. I don't wanna ruffle any feathers. Um, so anyway, I just wanted to talk a bit, I've been watching the video from the, the community meeting on July twenty-fourth and I just watch it over and over and over and I, I fear that Phoenix is my, my concern, I didn't really have an opinion on data centers even at the last city council meeting. But my opinion of Phoenix is that they're just trying to tell you whatever they want to tell you or throw you the amount of money they think they need to throw you to get this thing going and up. And some of the concerns I've had from that, I just want you to know, um, they said it was a speculative development with no end user in mind, that, that, they literally said that. And then they kept repeating about the end user's preferences, about the end user doesn't want a, um, an independent noise evaluator and stuff like that. And I just couldn't figure out if there's no tenant, why were there so many details about the end user? My second concern is the noise analogy, they said sixty to sixty-five decibels is like a residential dishwasher. But I wanted everybody to know that sixty-five decibels is not five points higher than sixty, it's five times louder than sixty. So my dishwasher at home is a G E profile, it's brand new, it's the cheapest one I could get and it's fifty decibels. A KitchenAid Quiet Series is thirty-nine to forty-six decibels. A Miele G five thousand six is forty-four decibels, that's like a quiet office or a library. A Bosch eight hundred C is thirty-eight decibels, which is about a soft whisper at home. And when they say fifty-five to sixty, they haven't made a sixty-decibel dishwasher since the nineteen nineties, just so you know. And when you've got these dishwashers running, your dishwasher usually runs for about an hour and then it shuts off. These dishwashers are gonna be running twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. And it's a seventy-acre lot with seven acres under roof right now, but they said at the July twenty-fourth meeting that they wanna get permits to build more buildings. So they might be able to put as many as ten buildings there. So that's a lot of dishwashers and a lot of loud dishwashers. Actually, sixty-five decibels is more like a busy restaurant, just so you know. So that's another concern I had. Um, the scale and the concentration, I mentioned that. Um, they showed you a vacant spec building in Normal, Illinois. And they said, we're, we're a spec builder and we don't have any clients in mind. But they failed to mention their Memphis Colossus project where the end user Elon Musk secretly installed thirty-five methane turbines without permits, which has created a P R disaster. And they didn't mention this project, they mentioned an empty building in Normal, Illinois. Um, why, why hide perhaps their most relevant case study?
Mr. Carrington?
Yeah.
I do apologize, but your three minutes have.
Oh.
Uh, but if you do have, yes, sir, if you do have any additional questions or concerns, um, please feel.
No, I think I covered everything, I just, my, my, I guess my, my only other concern was the N D A, if they can go downstate and get some agreements and publish an article about a data center coming to Michigan City, you shouldn't be held to your N D A, in my opinion, there should be some sort of an out clause, they can't talk about the project.
I do apologize, but you have to in your comments, thank you, yes. Go ahead. Okay, it'll be one moment, the young lady in the back.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Will be next.
Uh, my name is Amy Listenski, I live at one oh four Mayfield Drive. I kinda wanna still also talk a little about the data centers. And, um, I know many of you have heard from me where I'm constantly stressing there must be transparency because we feel like a lot of that was taken away from us. Um, I cannot stress enough that touring other data centers, because I've heard this a lot and I heard it even referenced here again today, means absolutely nothing if you do not know the end user that is coming here. You can go to whatever data center you want, but unless you have a promise to me that that's the end user coming here, then that information doesn't necessarily help us. Um, you have these locations? Oh, sorry. Um, I stress the transparency again, um, I've really asked, I actually asked several of you guys the idea of a second workshop after some of that got, I think, mishandled. Um, and I asked about bringing in different sides to the workshop. Um, there's actually gonna be a virtual workshop coming to our city, being held by the Citizens Action Coalition on Tuesday, August twenty-sixth at six P M. I will share that invite with all of you guys because it's gonna have hopefully a lot of useful information and will also be very interesting to see if any of you guys choose to attend it. Um, one of my other just big things, and I know I think I saw in an article, it was quoted at one point that a different, that Phoenix was gonna be willing to take a different direction with the data center. My question then was, who made this decision for the city? The residents weren't given a say in that decision and that would have been a perfect time to get a feel and bring that to the public. We could have voiced our concerns and encouraged the right path forward with this as we just saw a nearby county working on creating zoning for data centers the proper way. Plus, I have researched and I have seen Phoenix with some of their other projects that they have used and they've been different projects that may have been more supported by the city versus somebody making the choice for us to, for it to be the data center or not. I actually hope that's something that would still be on the table, but again, we're not getting all that transparency.
Thank you. Yes. This will be last public comment for the evening. Uh, other than, no, I'm sorry, then the gentleman, right? It, it was you the last time standing there, yeah. My apologies.
Yeah, yeah. I still have a comment. You can't. Public call.
We're not gonna debate this, sir. Sir, if you will, please state your name and your address.
My name is Tom Haddock, I'm at seventeen BlackBerry. I moved here in, uh, about four years ago. I moved from, uh, a town that has fifty data centers, small, medium and large. And I've kept track of what's going on with some of those data centers. So I, the, the data center that we're referring to here, I would say would be in the category of a medium data center. Uh, there are smaller, there are medium ones, and then there are the type that are over in New Carlisle. But if you're on the way to Notre Dame, you're probably driven by it a few times. Um, but a medium data center uses thirty, three hundred thousand gallons of water per day for the cooling. And that's an average of those fifty, you know, that are in where I came from. So my question would be, has an environmental impact study been done? Because when, after the cooling is done, after the water's been inserted into the process, there's a lot of chemicals and other sediment that sink into the, or they gotta go somewhere. So you're probably within half a mile from Trail Creek. What does that impact Trail Creek? I'm a fisherman, I really am, am worried about that. The, um, the other thing is how much energy is going to be required? I know it's across the street from a, a Nipsco facility. But if, um, just to give you some more reference points, uh, it will consume one to five, one to five megawatts per day. One megawatts is enough to power a thousand homes. Five megawatts is five times that, so that's the impact that you may not have thought of, it's not just a business going in there. It's something that has some real impact. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Yes. Uh, this gentleman was next, he's, he's been standing up against the wall.
Hello, uh, Stephen Cornacki, fifty-four ten Rogowski Ave. Um, I'll try and be quick cause I know some of us are tired and we wanna go home, it's almost nine o'clock. Uh, the one thing I wanna, you know, just stress, cause I wasn't planning on talking, so I'm shooting from the hip, is with these data centers, um, check out the one in Chesterton that they're gonna do at the old Brassy Golf Course. They first came in, it's gonna, you know, it's only gonna be this, uh, small, two-building structure, whatnot. Then they started having workshops and then come to find out, they actually wanted to do a two-story. So in the plan, uh, right now, maybe the current building can't support a second structure on top, but then when they do the second structure in the back, is it gonna be two stories, possibly three? Excuse me. Um, the other thing, it seems that we're stressing is the city's kinda low on money. Um, and you guys are, I wouldn't say you guys, but the way it's being sold in our agenda meetings is that it's about tax money, tax revenue, thirty-nine years is quite a bit. Um, and it seems that the plot is already zoned for a data center. So maybe cut the time in half, increase the money, make it a little bit more worthwhile. And then I know at the next meeting, we're gonna be talking about abatements, um, for the property zoning itself, bless you. And it's kind of, to me, counterintuitive when we're trying to get it pushed on us for tax revenue, but then also give them a tax break for construction and whatnot needs. Um. And so maybe think about that a little bit more. Um, I'm kinda blanking, sorry. The one thing I do wanna stress, I'm sorry, Vice President, I gotta point you out, is last week or two weeks ago, you mentioned, there's a bunch of stuff online, what is true? Need to be careful with saying that because if you can't tell what is true online, then we really need to sit there and think about it a little bit more. And then how the information is being, um, brought to you. And how do you know if that information's true? Uh, cause we gotta think, the Phoenix company, they have an agenda in mind, they have a plan, they're gonna get their nice bonuses. And you guys are, um, at the end of the day, the purchaser. Um, and when used car salesmen see you guys walking out on the lot, they're gonna sell you something very nice and what's gonna happen in a month or two with that car? Uh, is it gonna break down, whatnot? Um, I also have experience at a company. I know they said this is a, uh, closed-loop cooling system. Um, I worked for a company that was a startup in Portage and they had a closed-loop cooling system. I will tell you, it was a lot of problems making sure all the machinery had the exact amount of cooling water and how many times we gotta fill it up, dump it, fill it up and dump it. So it's not just, hey, we're gonna put water in it, it's gonna run, we're only gonna put a little bit of fluid in there to compensate for the algae. It's not, they have to, uh, at the end of the day, it's kinda like making a recipe, having the right amount of ingredients in there, right amount of water, right amount of flow to make sure everything is cooled properly. I see it's going red, so have a good night.
Alright, thank you, sir.
Alright, Ernie Hollahan, three oh two Gladys Street. Right. It, I've been up to this many a times complaining about no industry in this town. Now people are, are shooting down one that's trying to build and move to Michigan City. You wanna run them off? And where's gonna get around and no industry's gonna come to? come to Michigan City? You get your facts before you come up here complaining. You got to get facts where you know it's true. But regardless, I'd rather see industry come here to give people work. Poverty level is sixty-one percent here in Michigan City now. And Nancy, your recycle. Very few people I see really, really get into it like I do. I emptied a container down the alley for me with plastic bottles and pop cans and put in my recycle that they put out for garbage. At Woodland and twenty, you set it to red light, southwest corner or southeast corner. And see all the garbage that's thrown out right there. It, it, it really disgusts me to drive around town and see all this plastic bottles and garbage. I called the mayor's office on Woodland Ave at the car wash there. There were about six bags of trash behind that car wash lined up on Barker Road. And people were throwing it everywhere, digging through it. It's sad when you drive around town and see all of this. Thank you.
Thank you. That was our last public comment for the evening. Public comments by the council. Are there any comments from the council? Any comments from the council there? Councilman Preszbalinski.
A couple of things. In this one here, the boat race, we didn't have a chance at the last council meeting to comment on the boat race. And what a fine job the Visitors Bureau did on it, Jack Arnett and his group over there, all the departments in the city that helped out. And especially the Park Department for keeping, for keeping Washington Park cleaned up and ready to go for three days with all these, you know, thousands, hundreds of thousands of people or whatever the amount was. So kudos to them. And I guess there's one thing that kind of, kind of gets me. I know some guys that work at the golf course. I don't know how many of you folks ever go out to the golf course or golf. But, you know, vandalism that goes on throughout the city that nobody ever hears about, except these gentlemen showed, showed me last night what took place out at the golf course. And they don't know who it is. They have an idea who it is. But there's, there's a, a restroom that's out on the course and somebody or a group of individuals went out there. They ripped the urinal off the wall, ripped the toilet off the floor, tore the sink off the wall, busted everything up inside of it, started it on fire for a partial piece. So the golf course maintenance guys cleaned it up. They cleaned it up. Come back two days later, somebody had tried to pound, knock off the brand new handle that was put on there. Because now they're locking it at night. They used to leave it open. So you can't trust anybody. But to me, I guess my point is, you know, what's going on? Why is it going on? You know, how do we stop it? Take, for example, like today. And I know, you know, we could make light of it. But when I heard of it, the first thing this morning, on the first day of school, there you got twenty school buses with the catalytic converters cut off right in, right in the barns where these buses sit all the time. And I just said, no, I, I, I don't, I don't get it. I don't know how this stuff can happen, how it can go on, how it can continually go on. Yeah. You know, and, and when, when the chief of police was here early in the year giving his report, you know, kudos to the police department. But to me, a safe city is a progressive city. And somehow we got to get back on that track to get things straightened around. And it's going to take a whole city to do it. With that being said, and my, I am also going to, and I know some other council members are going to the data center in Ohio here next week to see what's going on there. And I was one of, I don't know, four council people that took the trip to Hammond to see what that data center was like. So we are trying to do our due diligence the best we can with the information that we can get and yeah, go from there. So thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other council comments at this time? If there are no other council comments at this time, may I entertain a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Everyone, have a good evening.